Will come to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Chairman Bray is present, Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Commissioner Kish is present, Commissioner Keys is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Commissioner Walters is present, Commissioner Steiner is present. Chairman, we have a forum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. On to Agenda Item Number Four is the minutes from the September 12, 2018 meeting. Those are there on your iPad. And once you review those, I will take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the meeting minutes from September 25.
I second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish. Was that Commissioner Maloney or Keys? Maloney? Commissioner Maloney seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda item number five is a call, public comments. This is the time for citizens who would like to address the planning and zoning commission on any non-agenda items. Does anyone from the audience wish to speak on any non-agenda items at this time? Are there any speaker cards? Alright. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, this is disclosure of ex parte communication. This is the opportunity for any commissioner member to disclose any ex parte communication they may have had prior to this meeting. Commissioners?
None.
Thank you. There is one agenda... Okay, so, do we have old business or no old business? My script says old business, but the agenda says no old business, right? No old business? We're gonna go right into new business, okay. The new business then. Agenda Item 8.1, this is a use permit request for the convenience use drive-through restaurant on property zone, planned area and development general commercial. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. The drive-through restaurant under consideration tonight is Culvers. The subject property is 1.7 acres. It's on the west side of Australia, south of Van Buren and Kitty Corner from the new Dunkin' Donuts. It is also within the approved Hudson Commons mixed-use development. As I think you'll recall, Hudson Commons had a section of single-family homes, multi-family homes, and of course, the commercial. And Culvers will be right here at this pad at a existing full median break in Australia Parkway. This is their site plan. The access to the parcel will be internal off of these two drives that come in to serve Hudson Commons. And from there, you can get into the parking lot where there are 64 parking spaces, or you can come in here and go through the drive-through. And those two drives, of course, are off of Australia Parkway. There will be, within the building, there will be an approximately 2,400 square foot dining area, as well as a 1,000 square foot outdoor patio area. Very nice landscaping plan. You can see that they have extensive buffering along Australia Parkway that will also serve to buffer the drive-through lane around the restaurants. These are their elevations. It's a stucco base with accent stone, brick, and metal, as well as a roll-up ultraviolet shading, shades around the outdoor patio area. This is the main entry to the restaurant, which faces south. This is what faces Australia Parkway. This is, faces north. And here's the drive-through window here. And then this is what faces the interior of the Hudson Commons Center. The request meets all the evaluation criteria for the issuance of a use permit, and in particular, for a convenience use for the drive-through. And staff is recommending approval of the use permit. And we ask that you do so as well, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Thank you. Is there any questions for staff? Is the applicant here tonight?
The applicant is here tonight, and I believe has a few words for you, and will answer any questions you may have of him.
Okay. Does the applicant wish to address the council?
Sure.
Okay. For the record, your name and address, please.
My name is Scott Odeah. My home address?
Or business address?
Business address. 2141 East Highland Avenue in Phoenix, Suite 275, Hilgarth Wilson. And so, Karen, thank you very much. You basically said everything that we really need to say to describe the site. I am here on behalf of Greg Landon, the franchisee for Culvers. So, he, right now, is in Wisconsin. So, I would be happy to address any questions that you have.
Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming out.
Okay, thank you very much.
Alright. Is there any speaker cards or any comments from the public? Alright. Seeing none, we will move on. We'll close the public hearing. And is there a motion for Agenda Item 8.1?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve case number 18-300-00006, subject to the stipulations in the staff report.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the use permit request for convenience drive-through restaurant. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries, thank you. Agenda Item 8.2 is the La Privada rezone. I will open the public hearing on that, and Katie's going to present.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. I am presenting on behalf of Alex Listinsky this evening.
Oh, okay.
So, this is a proposal to rezone a development in West Goodyear known as La Privada. It's approximately 193 acres. It's located east of Perryville Road and north of Yuma Road. It, there is, let's see, county land with residents located to the north and east of the development. There's planned residential to the, another portion of the north and south, which is planned but not developed. And then another area that's within the county adjacent. The current zoning is PAD with underlying R1.6 and R1.7 zoning, which would allow for 60-foot, 70-foot wide lots. And as you can see on this map, it's made up of about five parcels or phases, that they're each about 40 acres, a little less than 40 acres. And you can see here, so, the proposed changes are only on two. And I have a couple maps that show this, so hopefully, when I get through all these slides, it'll show it. So, this parcel here would remain the same as it is today. Same with this parcel and this parcel. But this one is proposed to go from R1.6 to R1.4, and this one on the south would be proposed to go from R1.6 to R1.4. So, as you can see from the chart, currently, there's a total of 578 dwelling units planned. And this would increase by 24 units, so that 602 would be allowed. And then you can see the lot mix changes a little bit, adding in that R1.4 product. And then you can see this, the two with the circle are the two that are proposed to change. But, as you might remember, with the city adopting our new residential standards, along with the changes to the two parcels, the whole area is being rezoned from PAD to residential, so that we won't need that PAD booklet anymore. So, it'll be a little bit easier to administer. So, the whole area is being rezoned, but the land use plan changes only affect those two parcels that are circled here. According to those new residential standards, in order to get these smaller lot sizes, they have to do one amenity element, two connectivity elements, and three streetscape elements. So, La Privada is doing a couple things on the amenity. First, there is a parcel, and I'm having trouble with the mouse, sorry. But you can see that park parcel. In Amber Meadows, which is just to the west, there is a school site adjacent to that. And then this is the park site. So, there is a proposed joint school/park site that would be donated to the school when they need it, or could be used by a park if the school, for some reason, didn't need it. So, that also, that goes above and beyond most developments, so that also counts toward that amenity. But you can see the list of amenities that they're providing. And this map on this slide was provided to you in your materials as well, so you can see it a little better on your materials. On the connectivity, the next slide, you can see there is a trail, and I'm having trouble with this mouse, sorry. There is a trail that runs throughout the property, and that will be a publicly accessible trail. They've also committed to lot diversity that even in that R1.4, that at least 30% of the lots will be 50-foot wider, bigger. And then they also are providing smaller blocks, rather than having long areas that are not broken. They're providing smaller blocks, which provides a more connected community. Finally, the streetscape elements, they have committed to detached sidewalks, alternative paving. And then as an additional element, they are doing these paver entrance features, which is nice. They're located along the road that'll lead to the school, so hopefully, it'll help slow down traffic a little bit on the way to the school. And then it just provides a nice community streetscape feature. Notice was sent to property owners within 500 feet of the area. There was a citizen neighborhood, citizen review or neighborhood meeting held on June 6. About 15 residents attended. There were many questions and concerns noted, mostly surrounding concerns with having smaller lots and adding lots to the plan. And there was a summary of those comments provided to you. There have been no written objections or additional objections given to the city to date. The city, in our review, has found that the proposal meets the general plan and all other codes and ordinances, and therefore, staff recommends approval. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is any, are there any questions for Katie at this time? Yes, Commissioner Walters?
Katie, thank you for the presentation. In the neighborhood meeting notes that you provided to us prior to the meeting, I noticed that there were some references in there to disclosures that'll be made to future La Privada home purchasers, specifically the dust concerns and animal complaints. Is that part of, if we were to approve this, are those requirements for the disclosure part of what we would be voting on? My concern is wanting to make sure that these representations are captured in exactly what we're voting on.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner Walters. And I'm just looking through the stipulations. There is a general requirement that it be disclosed that La Privada is in close proximity to agricultural uses, and may therefore be subject to noise, dust, odors and association, and odors associated with such uses. That's the exact language. So, if the commission would recommend different language or more specific language, that would need to be proposed to be added as a stipulation.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Any further questions?
Also, in the neighborhood meeting notes, Katie, there's a reference to neighborhood concerns about lots adjacent to 181st Avenue be considered for... Strike that. There's a reference to single-story homes against, there it is, the White Tank Mountain views. Can you show me, or dial me in on where we're talking about?
Thank you. And you know what? I may, just because this isn't my case, I may need help from the applicant, but I believe this is 181st Avenue over here.
Yeah, it references adjacent to the channel.
Yeah. So, this, and this is the alignment. So, it's the furthest eastern edge.
All the way north to south, the residents were concerned about multi-story homes there?
Yes. There, it sounds like there was questions or suggestions that those homes be limited to one story. There is no stipulation requiring a limit to the number of stories. The typical city, there's no policy that requires preservation of views, and that's not typically something that the city takes responsibility for. As long as the proposed heights are in, are similar in character to the heights of nearby residences, that's what the city would review. And the heights for this district is similar to that, that's allowed under the county zoning.
Thank you, Katie.
Any further questions for staff? You said the applicant is here?
The applicant is here.
Does the applicant wish to address the commission? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Hugo Blanco. I'm with Melkor Developments. And our address is 6930 East Chauncey Lane, Suite 135 in Phoenix, Arizona, 85054. And I have with me a project manager for La Privada as well, Rick Don from Rick Engineer. Okay, so I'm gonna be pretty much just touching base on a lot of what Katie already covered. Thank you so much, Katie. Okay, perfect. Alright, well, first of all, thank you guys for the opportunity tonight. Today, and this is just a quick overview of La Privada, roughly 200 acres, east of Perryville, north of Yuma Road. We are, overall, getting... We are looking to rezone, removing the PAD, and rezoning parcels. Parcel 1 and 2 will remain R1.7. Parcells 3 and 5 will be R1.4. And Parcells 4 will be R1.6. And pretty much like Katie mentioned, we're just looking to bring diversification to the community. And I feel that the market's asking for first-time homebuyer product, and also first-time move-up homebuyer product. And we feel by zoning this and getting it rezoned, we'll provide that to that community along with our already final-approved parcel 1 and parcel 2. Excuse me. And this is just an enhanced conceptual landscape plan of what the lot layout will be looking like, along with some of the amenities, which in further slides, we'll be going into a little bit more. We'll be zooming in a little bit more and discussing those as well. Let's see here, parcel 1, this is where the dog park will be fenced in dog park, along with Ramada DG Trail, which is a decomposed granite trail, eliminates the dust and anything like that, along with play structures, barbecues, and those sweet amenities there. Parcel 2, which is a little bit, let's see, parcel 2, will be having a full-size basketball court, along with the sand volleyball. Another thing that we're super excited about this in introducing is amphitheater feature, which allows for a social aspect of the community, can bring everyone together, and kind of just for events, more for kids. We've seen them used as movie nights. We see anything from like Thanksgiving, Halloween, they can be used for that aspect, which those would be pretty sweet. And then also additional recreational space here that can be used. Parcel 3 here, we have recreational space that can be used for kids' practices. And that's another good aspect that we decided to add on to that, along with Ramada. Let's see, parcel 4, another amphitheater feature, along with play structures, Ramadas, barbecues. And 5 has a half-basketball court, Ramadas, play structures, and additional open space for recreational events and use. So, with that...
I was gonna say, if you don't mind, I'll let me add a few things. So, we've been working with Melkor about four or five years now. And when they bought the Paseo projects and they've kind of brought those forwards, they had an opportunity. The West Goodyear area's been trying to get moving for some period of time. And so, it made a lot of sense for them to add this to the, it makes it a lot easier to move some of those Crow options forward, get the infrastructure built out there. And these plans had already previously been approved. They were final, but they had lapsed. And so, one of the things that Melkor did is they had commissioned a study to see if they had added that diversification. And what they found was that by adding that, they could sell the project out in four years, instead of extending it over eight or 10 years by having that ability to do. So, it certainly shortens the construction line. So, with that in mind, what we did is we reconfigured the open space so that it really made the connectivity, because we really think that certainly healthier communities really make a big difference. You really want people to be able to bike and walk and take advantage of that. So, my background is actually, I'm an urban planner, but probably 90% of what I do is actually engineering. So, I kind of am, kind of can do both sides of it. So, does it really work? Does it really make sense? So, one of the things we wanted to do was make the connection. So, we, in parcel 3, can you go back here a little bit? You can just show the overall landscape, if you can. So, it was originally approved of that emergency conveyance channel. As you know, they have a lot of trouble with water out there, and they're trying to come up with a regional solution with the flooding that's out there. So, it's about 950 CFS that comes down through there. We increased a buffer zone along that trail, and we put a pedestrian path in, kind of right on the west side of the channel there, where previously, the lots were right up against it. So, that adds an additional buffer area within there. And then we made it so that you have this trail system that interconnects all the way up through the whole community in multiple places. And it also ties into the County Maricopa Trail, which is dedicated along Yuma Road. We had to make that, we had that as a component for both Paseo Place Parcel 1 and Paseo Place Parcel 2. So, we tried to look at it holistically. How can these trails interconnect? And how can we make it so that it's a better overall community? We want people to have it be a sense of place when they come home, not where they just come into their garages and close the door and go into their backyard. It was really important to us to make sure that it was creating a lifestyle for that. And I would speak to some of your concerns about the buffer zone and the Australian Mountains. So, I actually did a, did kind of a measurement of how far it is from the residence, and we've increased it. If you were to have from their property line to the backyard, it's 165 feet away, and the deflection angle between a two-story, or one-story and a two-story is really small. The Australian Mountains are over five miles away. So, it would, no matter what is there, the impact is gonna be really minor. And we want to be sensitive, because I know as somebody who lives in a county island up north, you want to be sensitive to those neighbors. And I think we're really trying to strive for that, which is one of the reasons why we put that trail in there. And we made it a public trail. And that's, we considered it public even before it was stipulated to us to be that way, because we want it to be part of the overall community. So, if you have some, you know, questions about how we came up with some of these concepts, I know that we worked pretty closely with city staff to get those recreation areas. This, I think, might be a slightly older, this might be a slightly older one, because we actually worked really closely with them to develop these, like soccer field areas, because we know that that's been a concern with parks and rec. And then additionally, this area up in here is a joint use with Amber Meadows. We would prefer it to be a complete park site in there. There's, the Amber Meadows folks still want a school to go in there, but we've had some previous discussions with the school. They feel like they would rather have a monetary contribution, but we'll honor whatever the school wants. So, our preference is it'd be so great to have a community park in here. It would be, it would end up being a, I think like a, because you have six acres, right? And they have six acres. So, that would be our preference, because we think it enhances this community and the neighbors as well. Eventually, it'll be some kind of combined site. It'd be nice if the whole thing was a park, but we can't dictate based on that. It's really gotta be a joint agreement with the developers for Amber Meadows. So, I think that maybe expanded a little bit more. Like I said, this project was approved before. We've, we have added some more lots, but I think that we've also enhanced the recreation and the amenity areas, not just for the, not just for this community, but in conjunction with Paseo, and in conjunction with the people that are gonna be living in that community. So...
Thank you. Is there any questions for the applicant at this time? Alright. Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming out. At this time, we'll move on to public comment. Are there any speakers cards on this one? No? Anybody from the public? Okay, so here's how this is done. You have a card? Perfect. So, just come to the mic. We need a name, address. You have three minutes to make your comments. And then just make sure that Heather over here gets that card, so that we can make sure we get the record straight. So, with that, welcome.
Thank you. My name is Bill Lanier Jr., and I live on 181st Avenue, which is adjacent to where they're going to be placing the subdivision. And some of the concerns that myself and my neighbors have, Ms. Walters addressed some of them as far as nuisance ordinance, because we are, we do have farms there, so there is smell. There is animal feces and everything that's associated with a farm. So, we're concerned about that. And also, the work hours that will be used when they're building the subdivision. What are the work hours going to be? And what are they going to do for dust control? And we're also concerned that along 181st Avenue, there's an irrigation ditch there that's open, where water flows through. And we're concerned about the safety of any kids that will be living there. And we're wondering if they're going to put a wall on that side of the buffer between our farms and the subdivision for the safety of the kids. And we're also concerned with the lighting, you know? And I believe Goodyear has it, so that lighting is supposed to face down, and it's not dispersed like it is over in so many other parts of the Phoenix area. And the mountains that we were concerned about are not the Australian, but the White Tanks, which are directly to the northwest of where we're at. And we are concerned about the views of that. And that's why I appreciate you bringing up the single-story part of that, because all of our dwellings in there are single-story, and we have a good view of those mountains. And we like to keep the rural feel. So, the addition, the change from the R6 and the R7 to two R4s is kind of a concern for us for density, for the population density. And also, that bring, especially along 181st Avenue, where they changed that one small parcel to an R4, and R1.4, that kind of, you know, we're a little concerned about that as well. And that's all I have for now. Thank you very much, council, for hearing me. And thank you again personally, Ms. Walters, for addressing our concerns earlier on.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any additional comments? Yes, ma'am? Please, come forward. Name and address, and you'll have three minutes, and they'll give you a warning as you get close to your three minutes. Just make sure they turn your slip in to Heather.
My name is Nancy Tannenbaum. I live on 181st Avenue also, just down from Bill. Bill covered quite a bit of what I was wanting to bring up. But the one thing that I thought I'd like to bring up too is the water issue. Because where we are, we're on wells, okay? And I don't know where they're gonna be getting the water for all these houses that are going in, because we don't have city water out there. And it's on wells. And that's where our water comes from. And we don't want to lose the amount of water that we get, you know, from our wells for all these houses, so... And what he brought up about the R4, changing it to R4 rather than R6, that's a big concern. You might not think so, but it really is. And I understand where the builders are coming from, because they get more money that way probably, but that you gotta take in consideration of the, when you have... But that you got to take in consideration of the, um, when you have lower-priced houses going in, you're going to bring in a different kind of people that may not stay there, and it can cause some problems. But that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public at this time? No speakers cards? No other comments from the public? All right. Um, I'll close the public hearing then. Um, and before we go in, uh, to, uh, discussion or vote, there is just a couple of things that, um, I would ask staff to, to cover this and, and hopefully cover some of the concerns that the citizens brought up. So, um, first of all, the, the ag concern, which I sympathize with, um, it is clearly stated in city regulation and then in the disclosure for sale property that they are next to agricultural property and everything that comes with it, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, I'm sure we have some general regulations and rules on work hours when doing construction concerning times they could start up equipment and service and dust as well. Can you cover that quickly, Christopher?
Uh, yes, sir. There is, uh, blanket city requirements regarding the, what time construction activity can start. It does depend, it does vary depending on the time of year. Obviously, when it's hotter, they start earlier and end earlier in the afternoon. If I'm remembering correctly, uh, well, it, it, it varies. It's like six o'clock, I think, if I remember correctly, in the summer. And something like that, yes. I'd, I'd have to double-check. I don't remember off the top of my head, but there is requirements.
So if anybody wants those requirements, I would suggest seeing staff after, uh, the meeting for specific requirements. Um, I'm going to go out on a limb here and just say all the dust stuff is covered by Maricopa County and their air quality rules.
Yes, sir. That's all part of the engineering review, where, uh, appropriate dust controls have to, measures have to be, um, not only permitted, but also inspected on an ongoing basis.
I am not sure if it's a, a line ditch or a drainage ditch or what kind of ditch it might be, but I imagine that's covered by the irrigation district that owns the ditch, correct? And is the, are you working with them to solve those issues? Quickly, please.
All, all I was gonna say is it's actually a private ditch, but our idea is required to take the tailwater, and they're actually going to pipe the ditch and have delivery in. It's actually to take tailwater, not deliver the tailwater.
Okay, thank you.
So they, they are addressing that.
Thank you. Uh, lighting ordinances?
Yes, sir. So like street lighting and things of that nature, uh, this is project in the city, so it's subject to all the normal city requirements with the downlighting and so forth. Mr. Chairman, can I just clarify the, um, construction time?
Yes, you can.
If I may. So from April 15th to October 15th, um, between 5:00 AM and 7:00 PM. And from October 16th to April 14th, 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Um, and then lastly, I know that the water, uh, was brought up and, and the use of wells. And, um, my guess is that they have to follow all the ADWR requirements, and the water will be coming from the city, and there probably will be no wells on site.
Uh, I don't believe there are new wells are proposed. Uh, applicant is shaking their head. It's all the utility services, water and sewer be provided by, by the city itself. So there's public water lines being installed and public sewer lines being installed.
Okay, thank you. Um, just wanted to kind of walk through those. I'm not sure it got everything you guys wanted covered, but, um, hopefully you got some answers. And if not, I encourage you to talk to staff afterwards. With that, is there any further questions for staff or the applicant from the commission? Commissioner Walters.
Katie, could you please address your thought on the R14 up against the 181st Avenue existing properties?
Thank you. And if I can, I'm just going to borrow the applicant's. And I'm sorry, for clarification, on what regard? Because I know they asked about accessing.
The density, the density concern. And I would note, note for the record that this slide is incorrect in referring to 183rd Street.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. So this, as, um, we stated before, these two parcels are remaining the same. They can develop these two today as they look, and there, as the applicant stated, there was previously a preliminary plat approved. This is the exact same plan as was previously planned. There's just a few additional units. Now this, again, there's between this parcel here and this parcel here, there's 24 additional units. But the greatest impact to the neighbors might be this row of houses where there's now, and I don't know the exact number, but that now there's a few more homes being proposed along this road. This is the area where the applicant stated it's about 150 feet because of this facility. So the area that's changing is separated most from the county land.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Uh, with that, I will take the, uh, motion on agenda item 8.2.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item number 18-200-00004. La Pravada Rezone.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kish, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the La Pravada Rezone. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Walters.
Mr. Chairman, I would propose a stipulation that the homes along 100 and, oh gosh, I got to put up the right street. No, that 183rd is wrong.
181, yeah.
Bear with me. I'm going to pull it up so I can say what I want to say. Mr. Chairman, I would propose that, a stipulation that the parcel R14, the proposed parcel R14 on the corner of Yuma Road and 181st Avenue, that the homes bordering 181st Avenue only in that R14 parcel be a single-story.
Okay, so that's a, a, an amendment to the main motion. Is there a second for Commissioner Walters amendment?
I second.
Been, uh, seconded by Commissioner Steiner. So the amendment is, is that the, uh, parcel, um, on Yuma and 181st, uh, with an R14 zoning, that all homes adjacent to 181st be single-story only?
That's a proposed amendment, subject to discussion.
Okay.
Chairman, in the meeting notes, if I read them correctly, on, uh, it says Melkor cannot guarantee the one-story requirement at this time for those lots. Um, it's in the meeting notes.
From the, yes, that's from the, the neighborhood meeting, correct?
Right, correct.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? And, and we realize that the, the amendment is only basically that 40 acres there, right? Because it doesn't, it wouldn't, we wouldn't require that for the rest of them.
Right. Um, the proposed amendment is strictly the homes bordering 181st Avenue, um, in the R14 parcel on the corner of Yuma and 181st Avenue. And I welcome, if the applicant wants to address the amendment.
I'd just like to say that I actually did kind of a geometric thing where I, and I misstated before, it's not the Austraia. I knew it was the White Tans Mountain, but it is five and a half miles away. And what I did is I did some mathematical whatever. If you're five foot tall and you're looking out through it, I think there, the, the difference in the view is they're probably going to be subjected, uh, whether it's a single-story or a two-story to those views. So I'm not sure that it necessarily has a significant impact, because a two-story house is 20 feet tall, and a three-story house is 30 feet tall. And the difference geometrically, it didn't make any difference. They may find even the single-story that their views are going to be obscured.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any other discussion regarding the amendment, um, by Commissioner Walters? Okay. Uh, seeing no further discussion, we will take a, uh, vote on the amendment by Commissioner Walters on the single-story for homes along 181st Avenue. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, so now we're back to the original motion for, uh, agenda item 8.2. Now we have the approval of, uh, the rezone with a new stipulation, um, of single-story only adjacent to 181st Avenue. Is there any discussion on that?
No.
Say none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. If you don't mind, we might wordsmith, we, we totally understand what you're saying, but we might wordsmith a little bit to add clarity, because that parcel does have a name, and we can reference that.
I think we give you full authority to do that.
Okay, but the meat of the stipulation will be forwarded to council.
And for the residents, thank you for coming out. Um, if you have further questions at the end of the meeting, staff, I'm sure will be happy to help. Just to let you all know that, uh, this is only an advisory board, so, uh, city council will have final say, uh, on, on that rezone. So this is just one stop of many. Uh, with that, we'll move on to agenda item 8.3. This is preliminary plat for the Austraia Parcel 7.1, and Katie's here to present.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the commission. As stated, this is a preliminary plat in Austraia for parcel 7.1. It's located generally northwest of Austraia Parkway and Calistoga Drive, about 21 acres. And it's proposed for about 80 lots and 32 tracts. This, um, lot was part of the, um, rezoning for Montecito that came through, um, last year to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It is zoned for court home product. And this is a copy of the preliminary plat, and they, as you can see from this exhibit, they're mostly six-pack court home. But there's a few that have fewer than the six-pack. I did want to note, one of the stipulations, we would, um, propose changing stipulation number six, um, has to do with the traffic signal payment. And we just realized after the staff report was provided to commission that the zoning had approved a different timing of that payment. So, um, we would modify that stipulation to adhere to the zoning that was previously approved. So it doesn't change what the payment is if, or if there's not a traffic signal. It just changes when we receive that payment, rather than before final plat, it would be paid when warranted. Staff has found that the, um, plat meets all city codes and ordinances and recommends approval with the updated stipulation. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie, any questions for staff? Would the applicant wish to address the commission? Any questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none. Uh, is there any comments from the public? Speakers cards on this agenda item? None? All right. Uh, with that, I will take a motion on the Austraia Parcel 7.1.
Mr. Chairman, I move this commission approve case number 18-500-0005, subject to stipulations 1 through 5 and 7 through 10 in the staff report and the updated stipulation 6 as presented by staff at this meeting.
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the Austraia Parcel 7.1 preliminary plat. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, agenda item 8.4, this is the Cantomea Phase 3 Parcel 32 preliminary plat. Steve is going to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and commission members. We have preliminary plat here for Cantomea. And this is the overall master plan for Cantomea. Here we have Austraia Parkway and Willis here. All of Cantomea is that triangular parcel here. Uh, phase 1 wrapping around, phase 2, uh, up to phase 3, and here we are, right here tonight. Cantomea Parcel 32 kind of wraps around here, this little U-shape here. And this is aerial of overall Cantomea. Again, you can see how the development is kind of working its way around through the phases. And right here now, this is where we're going to start seeing the future development occurring. And again, here we are, uh, parcel 32 here, right on the cusp of some addition, uh, existing developments. Uh, we had a pre-plat that was approved for, uh, phases 2 and 3 back in 2014. And that included 326 acres, uh, 1,073 lots. It did include this parcel 32. And this is that configuration from that prior approval. And you can see it kind of maintains this U-shape here. The applicant would like to change the lot width within this subdivision. It's currently 70 feet in this approval here. They'd like to go down to 60 feet, which is permitted by the Cantomea PAD. And this is the new current preliminary plat. Again, you can see how the lots here start, Silverwood kind of wrap around. Uh, we do have an increase of four lots. We went from 37 to 41. So not a large increase with that reduction of the lot width. Uh, no changes to the street layout, a little bit of additional open space with this reconfiguration. About 11.26 acres, the 41 lots. Again, the lot size here that we're going to see is 60 feet wide by 117 feet deep. And again, given Cantomea, it's a gated community, these streets will also be private streets. And we have about two and a half acres of open space, 22% of the project area. Uh, with our staff review of this preliminary plat, we do find it is, uh, consistent with the Cantomea PAD. It is consistent with, uh, the city subdivision regulations. As such, we are recommending approval subject to the eight stipulations in the staff report. Uh, with that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Available for any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time?
Nope.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it. Uh, applicant is not here to do it tonight, right? Maybe not?
No.
This one of the residents is now in development business. Uh, all right, with that, um, I will, uh, take a motion on agenda item 8.4.
Chairman, I motion to approve, uh, case number 18-500-00011.
Second.
It has been moved by, uh, Commissioner Keys, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the preliminary plat at Cantomea, uh, Parcel 32. Is there any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Steve. Takes us, uh, to the homestretch, agenda item number nine, staff communications.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, just to kind of bring you up to speed, as we typically do at this point in the agenda. If you remember, we had the special meeting on September 25th to consider the Rainbow Valley PAD. Uh, thank you for your attendance and agreement to come to that meeting. Uh, that is going to be considered by the city council on October 22nd, um, in conjunction with their development agreement as well. So that's all moving forward. Additionally, just to update you on the items from the, uh, regular meeting we had in September on the 12th, the El Cidro PAD revision was ultimately approved by the council. The APS substation on Bullard, uh, that rezoning was likewise approved. The Pebble Creek Marketplace PAD, which, uh, was inclusive of, um, the, the apartment proposal there adjacent, uh, to I-10. And the Citrus Farms rezoning up off of Citrus, north of Indian School, uh, was all both likewise approved by council. And finally, the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 9.31 and the preliminary plat for Palm Gate, which is right over here, the, uh, storage facility, was also likewise approved by the council on the 24th. Um, one other little bit of information for you. Uh, we are, Katie and I and the team are, are going to be looking at some training opportunities for the commission. If you remember, we, uh, were successful in getting some, um, budget authorization for you all to have some training. were successful in getting some budget authorization for you all to have some training. Katie and I and the team do some of that with you, but it's probably also good to have a little bit of a fresh perspective. And you're probably tired of seeing our faces a little bit as well. So, we're going to be looking for some training opportunities for you. We would more than likely do it in conjunction with a regular meeting, maybe just have a work session either before or after a meeting and things of that nature. But, we'll give you plenty of advance notice. And I'd, I'd offer out to you, if you all have a particular interest of something that you would like to learn more about, or if something, you know, tickles your fancy, if you will, please let us know and we can consider that as we look for these training opportunities as well. Okay. So, thank you.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a reminder that our next meeting is November fourteenth. You might remember that we had originally gonna, we were going to have the meeting November seventh, but then the council meeting changed. So, it is going to be our regularly scheduled second Wednesday, November fourteenth.
Any other comments from the commissioners? All right. With that, meeting adjourned.